Good evening. It's March 4th, 2025. Time is now 5:30. We are Roca City Council meeting for our closed session portion of our meeting. Public comment and closed session items, public participations limited to those items listed for closed session. In your comments, if your comments do not concern an item listed on the agenda, please address the city on the next regular meeting. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members, when recognized by the mayor, may ask questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. These become public record. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Since council is unable to take action on issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff for follow-up or be placed on a future agenda item. Public comment period is not intended to be a question-answer period or conversations with the council or city staff. If you have any public comment at this time. Looks like we have no public comment at this time, so we will close the meeting and go into our closed session meeting. Oops. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Roca City Council meeting for March 4th, 2025. Time is now 6:30. Please join us in the Pledge Allegiance. Okay, at this time, we just want to remind everybody, turn off their cell phones. Audience members and our council. We did have our closed session portion of the meeting at 5:30. We do not have any reportable action to report. At this time, I'll do roll call. Councilman Claire? Councilman Davis? Councilman Baker? Councilman McCoy? And Mayor Middleton is here. All right. Item number six is the approval of the agenda. As presented, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? As presented, I have a motion from Councilman McCoy. And a second from Councilman Baker. I'll do roll call. Councilman Claire?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Baker? Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Mayor Middleton, yes, so motion passed and filed. Is there a approval of the agenda? Item number seven, this is presentations. This is the city manager and the Roca Fire Chief. This is the update on the sales tax, fire hall, and paid fire staff in the state of California. Update fire severity map for Wairika. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager of Wairika. We're going to lead the way here. We have some slides to communicate to the council and to the public about the next steps after the 1% sales tax was approved here in November. We also have Peer Sisku Mindy here in the audience tonight, and she is recording this because we plan on having that edited and then posting that on our website and Facebook to communicate to the public. So we get the word out, so people understand the next steps. So it's a joint presentation by myself and Chief Lemos, and Chief Lemos will lead the way here on the first handful of slides. So without further ado, Chief Lemos.
Thank you, Jason. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jerry Lemus, Waioka Fire Chief. So as you all are aware, some time ago, prior to the measure being passed in November, we started out with the anticipation that, of course, the hope was that it would pass, and it did. But we started working on plans for establishing a new fire station, looking for properties, working with the NMR, Nichols, Melberg, and Rosseto, the architectural firm from Reading is who we selected. And what you see on the slide there is a basically a computer-generated version of what the architects came up with. And I'm still just, you know, in awe of what it looks like and what it could look like when it's all said and done. So at this point, you know, we have the hopes of finishing up some final modifications to the plans, but this is basically what it would look like. You know, if we could start building today, you know, and hopefully within a couple of years, it would be completed. So we're well on our way, way ahead of the curve. Instead of starting, you know, once we knew that the measure passed, we were already ready to go hit the ground running when that happened. So that should eliminate some of the need for, you know, additional time to complete the project. So, yeah, it looks very nice. So, next slide. So the site selection process took quite a while, but we narrowed it down to a couple of sites. And we're currently in, working on finalizing the latest one. 915 South Main Street, the former ShopSmart or Priceless Food. It's been my favorite from day one. We had planned on doing some training there. And in talking with the PAC Trust representative, the landowner, we were able to work out over the years, we've, you know, talked about training and doing some different things there, and when it became available, we jumped on it. And we're still just finalizing that purchase agreement as we speak. So hopefully, you know, very soon, we'll be soon in terms of, you know, once all the due diligence work is done on site, we'll be breaking ground at some point. So so the design and engineering, as I said, from NMR. And we've had feedback through our fire department members. We have a committee that we've put together to kind of go over and learn from their perspective where things would be and how it would operationally, how it would would fit our needs. And that has happened. So in addition, we've been working on, this will happen sooner than the fire station completion, but paid staff. And that has been, you know, Mr. John Elsnab has been very helpful in getting job descriptions lined out and also the application process, you know, prior to putting it out to the public. So salary schedules along with that and determining, you know, who's going to be on the hiring interview panel. So we're in good shape right now for that to start in a few months, and hopefully by mid-year, we'll have some people hired. Next slide. So again, this is just another shot from what essentially would be across the street, maybe the county building or the museum that, you know, how that would look from that particular view. So as you see, it's a very handsome building, and I'm looking forward to, you know, moving forward and getting this thing off the ground and having it be the focal point for Wairika. Next slide, if there is one. So again, this will be the rear of the building, kind of showing that smaller gray-colored building there would be kind of where the barracks would be. And we're still working on a few modifications there as well, and, you know, have an area for personnel to, you know, next to the kitchen there to have their area to eat or, you know, enjoy the outdoors before they go on a call. And then, you know, farther to the right, you see the back part of where the apparatus, we could load hose, wash vehicles, that type of thing. Very nice. Next slide. Again, kind of a different angle from the front. The engine bays would definitely be more adequate than what we have now to fit the ladder truck and other apparatuses. Like I said in previous presentations, how they've become much larger than what they were back when our current station was built. Yeah, and it's, I can't say anything negative. We haven't really made that many changes except for doing a mirror image from where we had it on the north side. The engine bays are now on the south side to not interfere with certain traffic flow. So, next slide. Again, you see where it has City Waioka Fire Department there on the on the front there with the flagpoles and the nice Maltese cross emblem on the stone structure there. Just, it all really flows well together. So really happy with that. Next slide. And again, more of an aerial shot from the back of the station. And those are the roll-up doors, so we can drive in from the back off of Fourth Street and have room there in the lower left where you see the vehicles. That will be more room there. They won't be so close there. And then we'll be able to swing around to the right there where you see the edge of the tree and then have access to the front. So there's a lot of change, a lot of grading will have to be done in certain areas to accommodate that drop in elevation from Fourth Street down to the station. So, next slide. Okay, so that completes my portion, and I'll turn it over to Jason.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thank you, Chief Lemos. Once again, this is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. And so ultimately, as Chief Lemos expressed his gratitude, I just want to reiterate that gratitude that we are both very grateful that the community has basically voted to approve the 1% sales tax initiative. And now I just want to kind of give a deeper understanding of the steps that are happening behind the scenes. When does this go into effect? So the implementation date for this sales tax starts on April 1st, 2025. So the state of California is already engaging the local businesses to have the sales tax alteration take place on that date. We should not expect to see, this is from the state of California, we should not expect to see any of this new revenue dispersed to the city of Wairika until after July 1st of 2025. The tax is projected to bring in roughly $2.4 million annually. And the projects that we plan on funding here are paid fire staff and a new fire hall that is currently being developed, as you can see from the imagery within the slideshow that we're showing here tonight. Next slide, please. And so what are the timelines for these key events here for the city of Wairika? So for the new fire hall, we're currently under property negotiations with the folks that own the ShopSmart site, or what we commonly refer to as the ShopSmart or Old Safeway site here on Main Street in town. What has to happen regardless of that site? If we chose a different site, we need to do what's called an ESA Phase 1. So we need to check out the environment here. We need to know if there's been any level of contamination. And so that's really just going back to the property owner. That's filling out a form, having them fill out that questionnaire, which would have us start the process to identify, do we need to do some sampling? We're anticipating that more than likely Phase 1 will lead to Phase 2, which would be sampling. And we have some rough timeframes here, so we consider Phase 1 should take us about four to six weeks. Phase 2 of the actual sampling. So some of the things that you would find in an older building would be lead paint and asbestos. Those are very common things, and we would assume they would be on this site as well. And they would take into the lab and they would be tested. And then ultimately, there would be a demolition plan for those particular items so that when the rest of the building got demoed, people were not at risk of getting sick from that environmental contamination. And then another big one, especially for this site that we're looking at, is the geotechnical soil analysis. So we are building a very heavy building. We need to make sure, especially in a community like ours, where there's a number of mine shafts that run all over the city, we need to make sure that the soil is stable and can take the building itself. And so we expect that to take about three to four weeks. Now, this portion is extremely important because it gets built into the property agreement. And so we will be bringing on the 18th of this month contracts for city council to vote on, on whether or not they want us to move forward on the quotes we have for the people that will be doing, the consulting firms that would be doing this work. We also have Bond Council, Cameron Weest. We just spoke about this at the Finance Committee meeting earlier this week. And so we are looking at a long-term financial planning document for the general fund. And we want to know how this tax revenue is going to affect our current general fund combined with these projects that we want to fund. Paid fire staff and a new fire hall. We want to have a long-term financial document that everybody understands, the city council, the staff, and the public, so that we work that financial plan, because ultimately, we can expect the cost of construction to continue to increase really every day that goes by. CPI just drives construction costs higher. And then through that process, Cameron Weest will be working with USDA to really ideally, our ideal loan would be through USDA on a 40-year term. And so ultimately, we hope that the financial planning and the loan term coincide sometime around July, where we would be coming back to you guys with those documents. And I'm giving you some perfect world scenarios. So we would gain site control in the year 2025. That's our goal. We think that we're definitely going to hit that. And then moving into next season, we would have demolition and grading in 2026, and that would lead to construction in 2027 on this site. On the paid fire staff side, Chief Lemos mentioned this. HR Director John Elsnab has been just incredible with this project, so he's already started the job descriptions. He's working with CHW, our attorney firm here, on an update to the Fire Municipal Code. He will be bringing forth benefit resolutions for the city council to vote on. We are exploring the opportunity to possibly subsidize some of the staffing that we're bringing on, these six paid firefighters and one administrative tech that would help oversee grant applications, training, really support Chief Lemos with administration, and oversee scheduling and payroll, really. We're looking at utilizing the SAFER grant if the timing works out, so we can subsidize some of this new paid fire staff. And we plan on doing interviews for new paid fire staff this May, so just in a couple of months from now, with the hypothetical start date of July of 2025 to coincide with the fiscal year calendar start date. When we can anticipate, the funding would be coming in, and we would be able to cover those costs. So Chief Lemos and I are definitely available if anybody would like to ask questions. And then after this presentation, this will lead to Chief Lemos and the High Fire Severity Map will be the second special presentation this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. I'm sorry, did you want me to go to questions?
Really, if the council had questions, we're more than willing to answer them. If not, Chief Lemos does have a secondary fire hazard severity zones presentation to supply the council and the public.
Does the council have questions regarding our first part of the presentation? Councilman Davis?
About how much property does it take to build that fire station that you have on the wall there?
I don't have an exact knowledge of the acreage. It's over two acres, so it's more than adequate for what we're going to do, and we have extra space. We're not crammed in on that lot. So that was the best, that was the big selling point as far as I'm concerned, so.
There's ample space.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's actually more than what you might, more than what's in the fenced area. It actually includes portion where there's a couple of buildings on the south end there that are included. It has a little jog to it, but yeah, it's just what we needed. To be quite honest, to do a lot of training.
About what acreage?
Yeah. No, we definitely had that from the get-go and have verified all the measurements that, you know, what that property contains.
I have one more question. So when we start hiring paid personnel, we're going to make sure that we have finances coming in from the sales tax before we put them to work. Is that correct?
Yeah, ultimately, we're going to book some level based off of our projections that we had of roughly $2.4 million coming in. That'll be booked. It'll coincide with the new fiscal year starting, and so the new budget would have the salary requirements to make those payments built into that budget year. And that will cover us. We feel very confidently that we'll have no problem meeting salary expectations with that revenue.
And also meeting these expenses for the site and then the building construction?
Yeah, ultimately, we can anticipate roughly, you know, somewhere just under $1 million worth of salary is kind of what we're looking at. Ultimately, it depends on what type of individuals we're hiring. Do we have people that can reach the captain level, I think? Do we have people that are at a final step, or are we dealing with, you know, we're going to get a mix of people. So we're anticipating roughly just under $1 million. And then, which leaves obviously, you know, 1.4 left over. That's plenty of money, to our understanding, for site control and the work that needs to get done, leading to demolition and grading. And then ultimately, we would anticipate going into '27 that we would have that USDA loan that we would then start debt servicing that excess money with, and then still have the secured salary monies. But ultimately, you raise a good point, Councilmember Davis. Money is what keeps me up at night and the concern over it. So we're going to be.
We spend it, right?
Absolutely. So Cameron Weest in the long-term financial modeling is going to be extremely important for us moving forward so that we are confident in our plan.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, my point here is that inflation is about 3% per year. So if the site has, I mean, the station costs $20 million, it goes up about 3% cost every year. So I think haste, getting that site going and fit, ready for construction saves us more money than having the staff first. Just a thought.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Any other questions? Counsel? All right. We'll go on to the second portion of your presentation, which is not as exciting.
Not as exciting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again, members of the council. So recently, the governor of California passed an executive order that expedited the whole process for sending out the maps to the local responsibility area. The state has been working on fire hazard severity zones for quite some time at the state level. So, you know, we're bound by the city limits, so everything outside of that that is not incorporated, they have responsibility for unless there's a fire district or something of that nature that has jurisdictional responsibility for that land. So state lands have already fallen under this. So, next slide. So I'll kind of get into this, and this is going to be basically a cursory, you know, rough kind of a presentation. So we give you some insight into what's going on and what the requirements will be. So what is a fire hazard severity zone? Public Resources Code 4202 requires the state fire marshal to classify lands within the SRA or State Responsibility Area into fire hazard severity zones. Those zones are based on fuel loading, slope, fire weather, including winds, which would, as we all know, that's what creates some dangerous fire spread potentially. And then those zones are classified into moderate, high, and very high fire hazard severity zones. So that's why you'll see on the map you have in front of you why there's three different colors, and the legend explains that. Next slide. So what do the zones measure? This was kind of confusing to me at first, is what are we actually measuring? So the maps that are shown, they're measuring hazard, the hazard that is there with those criteria of fuel loading, slope, things of that nature. It's based on physical conditions that create likelihood and expected fire behavior over a 30- to 50-year period, and that's in their model, without considering mitigation measures such as home hardening, which is like changing your wood siding or some other flammable siding or combustible siding to a fiber cement, something of that nature, something that is non-combustible. And then, they don't take into account recent wildfire or fuel reduction efforts. It's just based on what they see around that zone, what could impact that zone, and that's what they use in their modeling. So, and on the other hand, risk is potential damage fire can do to the area under the conditions, accounting for any modifications that have been done with, such as home hardening, fuel reduction efforts, that sort of thing. And that's, risk is generally which question's going to come up. What about my insurance? Well, that's what insurance companies look at is the risk. So to help yourself theoretically, you would want to take those projects on and clear brush on your property and, you know, make it more fire safe. Next slide. So the history of, and I apologize if it's easier to read the acronym than having to say it all the time, but the maps we'll refer to are the Fire Hazard Severity Zone maps. I think that's fairly clear. But just to give you a history of it, it was developed from major destructive fires in the past. Some of the folks in here probably can remember back to 1991, the Oakland Hills Fire, which I do remember. And a lot of other things came out of that, which communications was one. But this fire hazard severity zone was basically born out of that particular fire. And what came after that, as we all know, I couldn't list them all on here and have enough room, but there were the Thomas Fire, the Camp Fire, and many others that have, you know, just been devastating. So Fire Marshal's Office has been tasked with coming up with solutions to kind of help with ultimately home hardening and fuel reduction efforts. And like I said, there's many other fires, not just that one that, you know, every year. This started, that's '91, that's longer than I've been in the fire department, so, you know, 30-plus years that they've been working on this particular topic. So there's always been modifications to it, changes, a lot of science has gone into it. So this is what has been born out of that. So, next slide. So what we're concerned about within the city is what is Local Responsibility Area, or LRA. So LRA or Local Responsibility Area is Incorporated City, an urban region, et cetera, where a local government is responsible for wildfire protection. And that's what we have to do as a city. The zones are determined by using an extension of the State Fire Hazard Severity Zone model. And that was what I was getting to earlier, was that 30- to 50-year plan or model that takes into account the fire weather in certain regions. And the rating reflects flame and ember intrusion from adjacent wildlands and from flammable vegetation in the urban areas. So you've all seen the horrific videos that were recently shown on TV from the LA fires and palm trees bending and the embers just, you know, it was terrible. So that's what you're having to try to see what that model does in areas such as that. And requirements, recommendations for landowners, basically it equates to, how do you mitigate that? It's through defensible space and home hardening, which is all contained in this new version of the law. Next slide. So the map that you have, if anybody in the audience will keep those, so it gives you an idea of, you know, if you know kind of where you're at. It doesn't specifically show the streets on there. And I will tell you that if you want to go to the, at the end of the slide presentation, there's a website for the State Fire Marshal's Office. And you can go on there and you can actually put your address in and see where you end up in terms of your hazard severity zone, where your home is. And if you have property outside, for some reason, if you had it in the SRA, you can do the same thing on the other map that's in there, but you make sure if you're in City Waioka, you go to the Local Responsibility Area. I think it's titled LRA or Local Recommendations for the Fire Hazard Severity Zone Map. Click on that, and there's a little search engine on there. You can see where your property winds up. So as you can see, it's not really a huge surprise in some ways, knowing, paying attention to what kind of fuels we have in the city. You know, kind of on the edges is the high, or the very high in red. And adjacent to that is kind of that, it's kind of a gold color is the very high, and then the little yellow band around the center of town is the moderate. So, and that was another thing, and they used to just have very high fire hazard severity zones. And then now they've included the high and moderate in their plan. So, anyway, please, you know, look at that. I recommend everyone go to the website to, because there's a lot of information, and I could sit here for hours talking about it, but it's very good, concise information that you can get off the Office of the State Fire Marshal for the whole program, and then specifically for the LRA. Next slide. So what next? So beginning tonight, we'll make this our initial public offering of the map. So that's required by law. And we were notified that the map came out February 10th, so 30 days from that date, we have to make this map that you have. And the information, which is on And the information, which is on the website, and you're free to call me and, and ask me questions. Um, but thirty days after February tenth, within that timeframe, we have to have this out to the public and then allow for review and comment. So we will let you know, it'll be on the city website and we'll notify you, we'll put it on the fire department website. And we can probably make some, have that available for comment on there if you have comments. So that's the first requirement. Secondly, or, and it starts a simultaneous, um, time clock. So a hundred and twenty days after February tenth, uh, after we received the map that day, after that, local agencies shall adopt the map via local ordinance. And they give us a model ordinance, which, uh, city attorney will be working on that with us to, to get that accomplished. And within that hundred and twenty days, so adoption of the map means what you see possibly is, you know, maybe on the map. We can't make it any less restrictive, so we can't go from, we can't say, well, this is very high. You know, that's, that's where I live. I'm gonna make that moderate. No, you can't do that. It can, you can only, uh, move it to a higher, to a higher severity zone. So, just so you know. So a hundred and twenty days after February tenth, within that timeframe, we have to adopt the ordinance. And then within thirty days of the ordinance being adopted, we have to transmit the ordinance to the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. So we'll be coming back to you and have some more discussions on this and have to have a couple of readings, I'm sure, to meet the requirements of the law. So, next slide. As I said, information on fire hazard severity zones, you can go to Office of State Fire Marshal, um, and then, you know, what you see on the slideshow there. And if you guys, um, I don't think you wrote it on the map there, but again, feel free to, you know, give me a call. If I'm not at the station, you can leave a message and obviously I, my phone number is on my business cards and all that. A lot of you probably already have those, but anyway, I'll answer any questions if you have any, counsel. Try to.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Any questions from the council or Chief Lemus?
Can I just make a quick statement, Mayor?
That's fine.
Thank you, uh, City Manager Jason Ledbetter. I just want to reiterate what Chief Lemus stated, that this will, this map will be available in City Hall if somebody would like to come review it. And it will be on, uh, just as Chief Lemus stated, it will be on the website. And then the plan at the moment is that, um, either the next meeting in March, we'll have the ordinance, uh, for you for review or possibly the first, uh, meeting in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Right, council questions for Chief Lemus? Councilman Baker?
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, Chief Lemus, I actually do have a lot of questions about this, but, um, I think that I will save them for when we talk about the ordinance.
Sure.
Thanks.
You're welcome. And Councilman Baker? I think I will wait as well till we get to that point. All right. Thank you. All right. Item number eight, this is a public comment. Public participation is welcomed and invited at all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, and disruptive remarks. Council members been recognized by the mayor may ask clarifying questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by this city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed under the public hearing or new business sections of the agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone on the, on the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. These become public record. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Since council is unable to take action on issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff for follow-up or placed on a future agenda. The public comment period is not intended to be a question-and-answer period or conversations with the council or city staff. At this time, if you'd like to make a public comment, come up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Louise Gliado and I live in Waireka. And, um, I have a comment to make, but it's to someone, just one small comment to make to someone specifically on the city council. I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I am going to request that Councilmember Claire, um, consider speaking into the microphone when he's up there because I went and looked at the, um, the YouTube that you had on there and trying to recap the last meeting that I was at, and I couldn't understand or hear a word you said. So please remember to speak into the microphone. I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I would appreciate it. And I did attend the last city council meeting. That was in January. And that was a brutal meeting because it was, you could have hang, you could have hung meat in here. It was so cold. And, um, I had to leave at around ten fifteen in the meeting. I saw after I watched the film went on to ten forty-five. I could no longer tolerate the freezing cold room. In my professional opinion, exposing council members with known cardiovascular conditions and older members of the public attending for over four hours put them at risk for peripheral vascular and/or cardiac symptoms or events. This meeting should have not been allowed to continue for over four hours as the chamber got even colder as the evening progressed. The main duty of the mayor is to conduct city council meetings. Does he not have the authority to stop or cancel a meeting? If he does, then he did not display good judgment, concern, or sensitivity for the other council members, staff, and constituents. If the mayor does not have the authority to cancel or stop a meeting for a good cause, then please consider adding this authority when you revise the code of conduct for elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Little close, public comment, consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A, approval ratification of payments issued from January twelfth, twenty twenty-five through January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. B, approval ratification of payments issued from January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five through February twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. C, cash balances budget to actual fiscal, fiscal performances reports for October twenty twenty-four. D, cash balances budget to actual and fiscal performance reports for November twenty twenty-four. E, approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. F, approval of minutes of the special meeting held February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. G, approval of the appointment of Juan Ramos to the Waierica Volunteer Fire Department. H, approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh-five of the city council, the City of Waierica, authorizing the city manager to recruit for the position of a fiscal and administrative technician. I, motion to direct city manager to approve requested fee waivers, overnight camping, and hanging of an event banner along downtown Minor Street for the Siskiyou Seenic Vice-Sickle Tour and Greenhorn Gravel Grinder Event. The recommend city council action before you use the motion to adopt the consent agenda of the city council, the City of Waierica as presented. What are the wishes of the council?
This is Councilman McCoy. I move that we, I move, uh, for a motion to adopt the consent agenda of the city council of the City of Waierica as presented.
I have a motion from Councilman McCoy to approve.
I'll second.
And a second from Councilman, uh, Claire. Will the roll call, Councilman Claire?
Yes.
Councilman Davis? Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question before, when you finish, please.
Does it have, okay.
That has to do with this, but I want that to be one when you finish.
Okay. Um, well, we can't change anything, but you can ask the question. Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Middleton, the motion passes five to zero. So what are the question?
Yeah, it was about the early part of our meeting. It said, uh, approve the agenda. So if we are going to remove an item on the consent agenda, is that the time that we do it?
Good question. It's at any point, correct? The consent agenda is too different.
Yeah, I think that, uh, we, let's defer to Mr. Jared, the city attorney. But, uh, my take would be no, that you would approve the agenda. And then ultimately, if you wanted to just pull an item off of, off of consent, you would wait till we got to the consent calendar. Or it'd be interesting to hear from Mr. Jared if maybe it's a better time during that approval that you make the request to pull items off consent. So if, um, Mr. Jared's available to answer that question, that's a great question.
Good evening, Mr. Jared. Did you, uh, hear the question?
Of course. Yes, I, I tend to agree with, um, um, Jason, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I tend to agree with what, um, Mr. Ledbetter just said. The one exam, uh, exception to that would be if the room was packed with, um, you know, every, uh, every kid who plays soccer and their family members about an item on consent. Um, and this has actually happened in a, uh, to me on one occasion. We amended the agenda, um, at that beginning of the meeting, did not wait to the consent calendar to pull that item. We took that item as the very first thing. So there, as general rule, I would agree, you, to pull something from consent, you just wait to the consent calendar. But there would be those, um, those times where you might have to act to reorder the agenda if something were on consent and you really wanted to, to move it forward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jared. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Jared.
All right. Thank you. All right. Okay. This is item number ten. This is, uh, public hearing. We don't have no public hearing. City business, uh, city manager, this discussion, public act, ugh, I'm sorry. Change the title, discussion, public action, a motion to add another Waierica City Council member onto the Waierica City, uh, citizen of the Waierica Committee. Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Waierica City Council. This is, uh, Jason Ledbetter, the Waierica City Manager once again. And so ultimately, we are here this evening, uh, on, on February sixth, twenty twenty-four, the Waierica City Council voted five-oh in favor of partnering with a local nonprofit to bring back the Waierica Citizen of the Year Event. City of Waierica staff placed a post on the City of Waierica Facebook page asking nonprofits to inquire with the City of Waierica if they had interest in organizing the Waierica Citizen of the Year Event. And city staff received one letter of interest from the Siskiyou Community Food Bank. On April sixteenth of twenty twenty-four, the Waierica City Council heard a proposal from the Siskiyou Community Food Bank to bring back the Waierica Citizen of the Year Event. The council voted four-oh with, uh, Councilmember Keg absent at that meeting to support the formation of the Waierica Citizen of the Year Committee. At the time, it was inferred that Duane Keg and Councilwoman Colleen Baker would be the two council members on the new committee. With Duane Keg not seeking reelection, the committee will be adding him as a general member. And we need one more Waierica City Council member appointed to the committee. Beyond the discussion, uh, in selection for one more Waierica City Council member to serve on the Waierica Citizen of the Year Committee, we also have the Executive Director of the Siskiyou Community Food Bank, Laura Leach, uh, here, present this evening to give an update on the planning for the event. Uh, but right now, what we're seeking is a nomination of a council member to join the Waierica Citizen of the Year Committee, followed by a motion to approve that council member onto the Waierica Citizen of the Year Committee. And once that's completed, uh, we would then turn to, I think, uh, Laura at that time to have her give her update, or you can determine how you want to, um, engage this. Maybe you go to Laura and then you go to public comment and then you can make the vote. That's an alternative as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Uh, do you want to hear from Laura first, councilmembers? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay. Laura, yeah, come on down.
Good evening. Laura Leach, Siskiyou Community Food Bank. So, yes, we need a new member, um, hopefully a volunteer member to join us on this committee. Uh, we'd like to move forward as soon as possible um, because we're going for the two thousand twenty-four Citizen of the Year. And so we would like to, uh, to hop on this quickly and get it going. So we can't do that without our, our second council member. So, um, and in the meantime, I have done research, which I was asked to do by the council members. And so I did go back, I think I got back to two thousand nine and found several of the annual, uh, Citizen of the Year Award Banquets. And they didn't have quite as many categories as we had thought, but we can, as a new committee, do whatever we'd like to set and agree on. So, um, I'm ready, willing, and able.
Great. Thank you. And, uh, Council Baker, you're currently the other member, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'll throw out a day, I'll throw out somebody if, um, I think you're Councilman Claire, um, I believe. All the other committees have been, um, filled, uh, recently. Uh, is this something you'd be interested in stepping forward to do? Or does somebody want to nominate? Or would you want to volunteer to do it?
Yeah, I'll volunteer.
Okay. So James, so we just go take a vote? Is that correct?
Actually, before you make the motion, just for, um, for process, if we can just get, uh, anybody that may have public comment.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you so much. Appreciate everything you do. Okay, so we have public comment, um, for pointing the new member for the Citizen of the Year. Okay, no public comment, so we'll go back again and, um, so Mr. Claire has stepped forward after I kind of asked him, but he's stepping forward, so, um, I guess, motion to approve Mr. Claire, Councilman Claire, to, um, replace former Councilman Keg on the committee for the Citizen of the Year.
This is Councilman McCoy. I'll make the motion, uh, to, um, approve, uh, Councilman James Claire as a replacement to Councilman Keg on the, uh, Sir Optimist, uh-
Mr. Optimist.
Excuse me, on the Waierica Citizen of the Year, uh, in, in addition to, uh, the current, uh, uh, member who, current council member who is Councilwoman Baker.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman-
A second then.
Uh, McCoy and a second from Councilman Davis. Roll call, Councilman, um, Claire.
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
And Mayor Middleton, I, the motion passes five to zero for, uh, Mr. Claire to replace, uh, Councilman Keg? All right, and you'll get all his information and get, or Colleen, to get it all set up when you guys meet next and everything. All right. Okay. Great. Thank you. Oh. Okay, the city manager, this is, uh, eleven B. This is a discussion and direction on proposed design for replacing Ringy Pool.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Waierica City Council. Once again, Jason Ledbetter, the city manager for the City of Waierica. Uh, so very exciting this evening to unveil, um, the design that we have created here for Ringy Pool. I have a lot of background and a lot of information, though, before we get to that point. We also have- We also have Devin Carter on the line from the architect firm NMR, who we've been working with on the design. And he will be fielding questions this evening from the council and the public. And ultimately tonight, there's no rush. We do have a presentation that has a design that we feel pretty confident in. But at the same time, this is a very pivotal step. We want consensus, and if that takes multiple meetings, we're willing to come back and make alterations as you guys see fit. And ultimately, that's what we're seeking here this evening is to get your feedback. We want as many comments as we can get to make sure that we finalize this step and move forward confidently that we have a design that we're all happy with. So I'm going to go back in time here, though, first. So in 2017, the infrastructure at Ringy Pool failed and the pool was no longer accessible to the public. A facility condition report was drafted in 2018 by a third party that stated the cost to replace was nearly identical as the cost to fix Ringy Pool. The community and city council engaged public input with multiple community workshops to develop a grant application to replace Ringy Pool. It's about the same time in 2018 that I moved here and I had members of the community knocking on my door. There was a huge push. There was a lot of public workshops, I think 11 of them, most of them took place at Ringy Park. And there was a lot of community involvement in trying to rectify this broken pool. A 2019 grant to the State of California Parks Department was applied for by the City of Wairika, but unfortunately was not chosen chosen for funding by the State of California. An alternative grant proposal from the community for a different location on Foothill Boulevard was then submitted. This project did, in fact, receive the eight and a half million dollars in grant funding in December of 2021 from the California Parks Department, but was eventually sent back to the state after discussion at city council concerning the cost of the project and the concern of not having engineered plans and a cost estimate in order to move forward. A critical first step in all publicly funded projects. At the January 3, 2023, Wairika City Council meeting, the Wairika City Council voted to move forward on funding a 95% completion study for preliminary design and engineering of the Ringy Pool complex, not to exceed a total of $750,000. After the competitive bid process on a of a request to request for proposal, commonly referred to as an RFP, Nichols, Melberg and Rosetto entered into contract with the City of Wairika. The community input from the 2019 grant process was used to guide staff and NMR on the design we will be seeing this evening. So I just want to reiterate the key points here. So all of that incredible public comment on that first grant application for the Ringy site was utilized in this design that you're going to see this evening. So we took that information, looked at what was feasible financially and tried to incorporate as many of those requests as possible. This evening, staff is requesting the Wairika City Council review the proposed design for replacing Ringy Pool. Take public input from the citizens of Wairika on any alterations that the council deems imperative to be made. Review the cost of those alterations with NMR this evening, or if the alterations require, have them brought back at a future meeting for possible approval. If the council and public are satisfied, staff is requesting approval of the proposed design in order for NMR to continue forward with a 95% engineered design, at which point staff will begin to seek funding options with the state and will reach out to our local representatives in order to convey our interest in resolving our current pool closure and our need to provide swimming lessons to our public, exercise options for our public, as well as a community engagement location for our public to enjoy. It is important to note that no current funding stream is available to the City of Wairika for the Ringy Pool replacement project. A grant will need to be received in order to bring this project to construction. The priority for the city remains the construction of a new fire hall and bringing paid fire staff to Wairika, to our Wairika Volunteer Fire Department. The Ringy Pool project is continuing forward and will require engaging our local representatives at the state level and tasking them with guiding staff toward the appropriate funding requests via grant applications to bring this project to the construction phase. So if you don't mind, Cindy, if you can pull up the presentation. And then ultimately, I'll just reiterate that tonight, the action by the city council is discussion and direction on the proposed design for replacement of Ringy Pool. If necessary, alterations can be made to the design and brought back at a future city council meeting to review the proposed changes to the design and cost of the project. A motion to approve the Ringy Pool design as presented or with council modifications could be made this evening if you felt confident with the feedback here given this evening. So here is the agenda for this evening on this presentation. I'm going to give you some background information. I gave you, I'm going to reiterate a lot of key points here, but I'm going to give you some background information on the failure in the prior grants. We're going to discuss the current plan. We're going to show you the current state of Ringy Pool. We're going to show you the proposed design. We're also going to show you the proposed design while looking through the lens of child safety, something that I worked with the Executive Director of the YMCA on. And this is something that's very important to the YMCA is always looking through future development, especially a site like a swimming pool through the lens of child safety. We're going to give you the cost of the proposed design that we currently have. We're going to seek public and council input. And then if appropriate, you can approve a design or please direct changes. And we'll have NMR change whatever makeup, whatever alterations you'd like to see. And then we'll schedule something to come back at a future meeting to analyze those changes and also look at the cost of those changes. So currently, the plan for this project, we are at step one. We're at finalize the design. That's our current step. So we're seeking public input and council direction. After that step, that will empower us to complete engineering to 95% plans. We will then take that information on what type of filter we're going to have, what type of chlorine we're going to utilize. And we will develop an annual maintenance cost for Ringy Pool. We will then be seeking grant funding, where we will probably engage Megan Dally's office quite a bit and any other representatives at the state level and also the Parks Department with the State of California to really seek our funding options. Then we would be making budget allocation for maintenance and operations. The grant would be funded and construction would start. This plan is really reliant on grant funding and it could take five to 10 years, just being completely honest with you. There's no, we can't control whether or not something gets grant funded. But it is just to reiterate that the city will be seeking grant funding as the primary source of revenue to bring this project to fruition. Certainly, we're going to move faster and attempt to make things happen substantially sooner than that. But I really want to be realistic with the community and also be realistic with the priorities currently that the new fire hall takes precedence financially over any other projects within the city. Next slide, please. So a little background here. So we had infrastructure failure in 2017 at the site. The facility condition assessment of 2018 came back and showcased that fixing or replacing was a nearly identical cost. In that case, you would always move to replace. There was a grant application made in 2019 that was not funded based off of some low modification or low not meeting the low income criteria of the federal and state at the current site. So then a grant application was awarded in 2021 for an alternative site in a seven-point acre aquatic center that eventually got returned by the city council due to the funding of the project or the cost of the actual project. And at the end of 2022 and start of 2023, Wairika City Council directs staff to fund design the $750,000 request with the revenue of sold property that the city had been making throughout those years. And so that's where we are at this moment. And so just back to 2019 and the grant application, there were 11 public workshops on community needs for fixing and replacing Ringy Pool. Some of the things that came up out of those meetings, this is before my time, but just looking at the documentation and engaging the group when I first started here in January 2022. Replace the pool, obviously, have ADA and multifunctional aspects to the pool. There was a desire to have a retractable enclosure that's not included in the design you'll see here this evening, based on cost. ADA compliant entrance. Modernize the building and add ADA features to the building. Have a splash pad. Make sure that the Little League field fences can be moved, so we're not imposing on that site. And ultimately, there's a desire from the Little League itself that the that the fences get moved back so that they can have competitions, so that their fields meet the competition for Little League and then they can have more events here locally. There was a desire for paths and landscaping. And then there was a desire to upgrade electrical, irrigation, lighting and security infrastructure. Next slide, please. So again, the current step that we are on is finalize the design. We want your public input. We need council direction. From that point, we would go on after we reach that milestone, we'll go on to complete the engineering. We'll develop the annual maintenance costs. We'll seek grant funding. We'll receive the funded grant. We'll budget allocation for maintenance and operations, and then we will start construction. So the City of Wairika currently owns a broken pool, which the public and council have made clear they want fixed rather than abated. That's your other option is to not seek a fix of the pool and direct staff to remove the poolhouse and the pool itself and just have more park at that location. That is not the direction we currently have. The direction is an interest in replacing the pool. The City of Wairika does not have funding for fixing Ringy Pool. I just want to make that very clear. There is no funding set aside for Ringy Pool at this moment, so it would require a grant. The City of Wairika has commitments that prioritize other projects above Ringy Pool. City staff will be working with our state representative to help engage the state departments for possible grant funding options. So we'd like to utilize our representatives and really put them to action to deliver us some options for grant funding. The path forward will require a grant. This step will be explored once a firm design is approved by the council. And as I stated before, I want to be very realistic here, as this pathway may take years to facilitate based off of needing funding from the state itself. Next slide. So if we kind of don't remember, this is the current state of things. You know, over the last few years of what of what Ringy is currently looking like. Next slide. So obviously, the spaces is secured. We do have folks, unfortunately, locals will vandalize or attempt to break into this site. So it is on some level a nuisance, to be completely honest with you. But ultimately, we're just showcasing so that we're remembering folks that maybe don't live over in this location just what this site currently looks like. Next slide. All right, thank you, Cindy. And we'll move on to the next slide and I'm going to introduce Devin Carter here in a moment. But first and foremost, before Devin kind of walks you through these images and then some of the overhead schematics, I just want to reiterate that we hired Nichols, Melberg and Rosetto along with the Aquatic Design Group via RFP for design and engineering. The prior community workshop info was reviewed and implemented as appropriate. And the style is really interesting. There's so many really incredible architecture styles here in Wairika. My two favorites, Art Deco and then ultimately mid-century modern. And so the style of the neighborhood itself over here on Nap Street in Ringy is post-World War II mid-century design. And so we've tried to incorporate that style into a really fresh and modern look. But we're willing to take any level of feedback. You're not going to offend us. We want to make sure that the public is getting exactly what they want. So this is a very imperative step. Without further ado, I'm going to kick it over to Devin Carter from NMR to walk through a multitude of the last steps until we get to the last slide. Thank you.
Howdy. Can can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Hi, Devin Carter. Thank you, Mayor, council members and the community. Like I said, my name's Devin Carter. I'm an architect here at Nichols, Melberg, Rosetto, one of the principal architects. And just a quick overview on our firm. We've got 75 employees, four offices, our main offices here in Redding. And we're super thankful for the opportunity to be working in in Wairika on assortment of projects. And I'm homegrown here in Shasta County. Sorry, I couldn't make it up tonight. I actually drove up for the last meeting, had the excitement of getting stuck in the snow and banging on the door and nobody was there. So got a nice day up in up in the snow. But anyways, I just wanted to just point out that, you know, I'm I'm from a small community here in Redding and I know the importance of a community pool. I've been blessed to be able to have our family grow up right across the street from our our community pool. And if I could jump to the next slide, and I'm going to kind of go through a few of these images and feel free to jump in if if there's any questions. So next slide. Yep. So I'd say the biggest change or approach to the way that we've laid the building out on the site is the orientation to the entry. The majority of the parking is just to the east. And we've oriented the entry to face the east. So there's an entry sequence of stairs and an accessible ramp that gets you up to the main entry, which you see there in that image. Next. This jumps to the inside of the pool. You're seeing, you know, the restrooms and poolhouse in the back, showers. There's some covered area and some pool features. I'll kind of get into it once we get into the floor plan a little bit. Next. This image showcases the splash kids' zone area. It's a zero-entry pool. It's got a overhead water feature and then also some jets on the sides. There's also covered area in the back. And I think one of the nice things we've done with the design is incorporate a little bit of grass. So there's outdoor area where want to lay out with a with a bench or chair or towel you can. Next. So this image over is kind of an overview of the of the whole site. You'll see now it's a little cut off here, at least from my perspective, but Nap Street is directly to the north. And we've have a an access point off a nap for accessible parking and entrance from there. But since the majority of the parking is just to the east, we have a direct link and accessible path there. And then oh, I guess I'm kind of off cue here. This is child safety. So one of the key things you see with this plan is that we really wanted to make sure it was an open plan and it was safe and and designed for families and children. So a few of those features that I think are listed, I can't see it, but I think they're listed on here are external restrooms, single occupancy restrooms. We have outdoor showers, outdoor locker area. The visibility from all angles across the pool, you have visibility to all those parts of the building. We have accessible zero-entry path into the pool. We've got, like I mentioned earlier, the pole off of off a nap and then the the pathway for strollers and wheelchairs, et cetera, off of the parking area. Next slide. So is this? Because I'm looking at a screen for you guys is I can't quite tell, does this have a bunch of callouts on the site?
Yes, it does. They're written in. So your new drop-off areas listed and then the new pool area and the way.
To say this is lobby, restrooms, changing.
Maybe that's. You have to go to the previous slide and let's let's go back to the previous slide, if you don't mind, Cindy. And I think that will be helpful.
Okay. Yeah, so so I'll go through this one real quick. So on the north end or the lobby, we'll start there and go counterclockwise. So at the entry, kind of open area, couple workstations. And. and some storage area. The next set of spaces are single occupancy restrooms. Then we have showers, some outdoor lockers. And then on the far left-hand side, we've got four changing rooms, a small area for vending. And then there's several guard stations around the perimeter. Down on the south end, the left-hand side, so the pool is split up into two pieces. You have your laps on the right-hand side and the kind of child zone, zero-entry on the left-hand side that has the interactive fountain that we were looking at earlier. And as you come to the right, there's some starting blocks for eight lanes, 24, 25 yards in length for high school competition, couple diving boards, some outdoor bleachers on the right-hand side. And then we've got our pump room and storage on the right. And because I don't have this slide, Jason, do you want to, I'm not sure what it says on there. If you'd like to speak to this one, please.
Yeah, no problem. Sorry, no problem. So really just reiterating, as you can see on the north side here, that's the pole in off of Nap Street. So that was a safety feature to keep kids off of maybe darting out into Nap Street when they're waiting for a parent to pick them up. Or if we have an ADA requirement, we would prefer that they had really easy access on that location rather than parking in the normal parking lot. But we did try to reorient this so that most people are coming in from the parking lot. I think that was a big request on the last go-around in 2019. And so that people weren't loitering on the sidewalk, because it becomes rather dangerous when young kids are on the sidewalk on that street. It's extremely external, and so there's no reason to take a shower at the pool if you're not wearing your bathing suit. That is really the point. And so really, you think about walking into this location. You come through either the office or the main gate. You sit down with your child, and your child, you can watch your child go into an individual changing room while no one else would be in there with that person. They can then go put their clothes or put their things away in a locker that you would be able to see them. You could be sitting on the other side of the facility. They can then take a shower before they entered into the pool, and you would have eyes on them. And then there's restrooms that have the external entrance, and they're single-person restrooms. And so ultimately, just really limiting the ability for children to be alone with someone that they're not familiar with. And so that makes it a lot easier. You'll notice that in the 50s and 60s, that's the majority of pools that are still in operation here in Siskiyou County. And there was just a different approach at that time, but we really feel like this is the correct approach in this era. And then ultimately, you'll see in the parking lot itself is that we have a loading dock, which you can take a pallet off of if you back a truck up from. And if we're, you know, we haven't yet determined what type of chlorine we want to use here. But we have our storage facility there and our pump room on that side. We're really trying to showcase and reorient back to the park and not to the parking lot itself. And so you'll notice that the view is really focused more on the park and not on the parking lot, too, where people commonly park for the football field. There's multiple covered areas. Really, the caveat for competition moving forward, it's eight-lane, 25-yard, which is, we worked with some local folks that used to be a part of Splash on that to make sure that we were facilitating the future use of this by hopefully some organization that will have swim events here and will have competition swimming again with children. And then we have that waiting area. That was a compromise, in our opinion. We originally started out with putting a splash pad externally at Ringy Park, and that just didn't really make a lot of sense. And then we thought, well, let's bring it into the fence, because I really am fearful of vandalizing. And then it just turned into working with Devin, that they had this really wonderful idea of a beach access side with a waiting area. And the pools are connected ultimately to save on the cost of filtration and pumping. And I think that really, really covers it on that slide, and we'll go on to the next slide, which will have costs, Devin.
So we've broken this up into three pieces, site work, the building and the pool. And we've got site work at 3.9 million. The building, 4.2. And the pool is around 4.7 for a total of $12.8 million. And this budget is, you know, fully burdened with the general contractor, overhead markup, bonds, et cetera. Also includes some contingency for unknowns during construction. And that's kind of where we're at.
Yeah, next slide, Cindy. I'll take this last one, and this is just a reiteration. And forgive me, I know I'm mentioning the same stuff multiple times, but I talk about this stuff all the time, so it's very normal for me. And I just want to continue to talk about it, because it'll normalize it for everybody here. And that is, we are at this current step of finalizing the design. We are really seeking obvious public input and council input this evening, because after we are completed on that input, we will then go complete engineering, which will prepare us to go seek grant funding at that time, because we will have a known dollar value that we are seeking. And then ultimately, we're very cognizant over maintenance costs and developing an annual maintenance cost binder with whatever decisions are made from the pumps that are going in here, the filter, just really being realistic over maintenance moving forward. And then ultimately, once we get grant-funded, we would move into construction at that point. And I won't reiterate the other aspects of this current slide. And I think at this point, we're ready for some feedback from the council and the public. And obviously, Devin will be able to answer the more technical questions this evening, and you're not going to hurt anybody's feelings tonight. Please let us know exactly what you'd like to see. If it takes multiple meetings, that's not a problem. This is a very important step so that we can move forward seeking the grant funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laber. Thank you, Devin, as well, for your work so far. So I'll go to council for any questions or comments for Mr. Laber or Devin that's on the Zoom. Or comments, questions. Councilman Claire.
Yeah, just maybe I've missed this, but so as far as the funding that we discussed or you brought up, have we identified any grant funding yet for this at all? Or is that when we get with the state representatives, they kind of guide us down to the appropriate grants?
During, when I first started here and I really investigated the grant that we had, it would be from what they commonly call O-GALS, but it's the State Parks and Recs Department. That's the most logical location that we would be seeking grant funding. But there was an issue ultimately with why we did not receive the grant in 2019, because it was stated within their metrics that it was too affluent in that area. And that's really meant more for a larger city, meaning that they don't want to see you consistently build all your recreation in the most affluent locations of your community. They want to see you spread out and make sure you're taking care of everybody in your community with recreational opportunities. But we really only have one location and one pool. And so when I reached out to other folks that received this grant, they, there was one in particular in Southern California where they pushed back with their elected official on the state of California at the start of the process. And they got a commitment that they were allowed to fix their existing pool that was not in a low-mod area. And so that would be what we would be attempting to do is basically leveraging our relationship with Megan Dally, Assemblywoman or State Senator Megan Dally now. And basically going and presenting our issue and ultimately working with the state as well, and just seeing if there was some ability to be flexible, because ultimately, we think our particular need doesn't really match the need sometimes of the intent of these grants that are really meant for larger locations. And that common sense really should prevail here, that it wouldn't make sense to go build a pool in another location where very small, like literally, size-wise, small community. And that ultimately, we want to fix the current location. So that would be the process. Step one, we would engage Megan's office, Megan Dally's office. We would also engage the state of California Parks Department to get clarification if the grants that they're currently funding still have that metric in them. And then we would utilize both of those folks to really guide us at that point, because we are then confused as to where we can seek the funding. And so I think that's an opportunity that I would utilize other elected, the elected body here, some of you to come engage down in Sacramento on this issue. And I do think that we would have the possibility for success.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilman Claire. Councilman Baker.
Thank you. I'm really excited about this. And living across the street from the pool right now, this excites me. I personally don't have any recommendations or any concerns about any changes. I really like the design, and I just can't wait to hear kids laughing and splashing around again. Thanks.
We agree. I think we all agree with that sentiment. Thank you.
Councilman Davis.
While, excuse me. Previously, when we had the Parks and Rec Director, Mr. McCoy, and remember, Mr. Foss, his common complaint was that when there was an accidental defecation in the pool, you had to drain the pool and completely clean it. And just a thought, maybe, I'm not saying it's the little guys that mostly did that, but maybe we should separate those two pools, the little guy pool and the lap pool. I realize that may cost a little more money for the filtration system, but it's just a thought. I mean, it's something that came up, and it came up quite a bit for Mr. Foss.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. So is that the case with the newer pools and the filters, that it, I don't know if he can answer, if the newer filters and the newer pool, like the newer pools, if it has to be drained?
I can answer this question. I was an environmental health inspector, and so ultimately, I inspected pools. And yes, it is state law that ultimately, if there is an issue, as Councilmember Davis has pointed out, that ultimately, you are required to drain the entire pool. And I believe it's 48 hours that it needs to be remained empty and thoroughly cleaned before you allow anyone back in. And so this is a great question for Mr. Carter from NMR as far as if you guys are desiring that, which is no problem to just go back and rework the numbers. Ultimately, to have two separate systems, I'm not sure if there's, if Devin would be able to just answer that off the top of his head, but what the cost difference may be. But we can kick it over to Mr. Carter and see.
Yeah, it most likely could use the same filtration system. We're just connecting the two pools with some, you know, or actually, it'd be just a little bit of piping, I would suggest. Justin is our pool expert, and he's not on the line with us tonight. But I think that's something definitely we'll be considering as we kick up design again is what we can do to mitigate that, and we can report back pros and cons of splitting them.
Right.
I'd say the one benefit is if you're an adult doing laps and you're also trying to oversee where your kids are swimming, you have a kind of an easy access point to swim over to get to them. But for safety, there's going to probably be lifeguards there, too, so.
Okay. Great, thank you. Nothing else. I don't have any questions or comments. This is ways in the making. And yeah, it's hopefully when we do get moving forward, that we can get past where they take a fraction of that area of some home values and some wages of just a fraction of that area where the pool's at, that they can see that there is only one area of that whole demographic area that they consider to be influential, or, you know, influence of the area of people making above the income, because most of the people are citizens, I should say, are households on, you know, moving more towards the south. We're not of a larger income. So it was quite disappointing that they took just a fraction of the Upper West Wairika and said, oh, it's, you know, people make too much money for you to get that grant. So hopefully, we could get past that, and they can see our pools in a very desirable area. The citizens spoke and wanted to remain there, because it's been there for a long time, has a lot of history, a lot of memories for people. And I'm very excited for the design, too. I loved it the minute I saw it. And hopefully, I'll still be around when the pool gets done. I will not be sitting here. Probably when it comes to fruition and being built, possibly. But it's very exciting, and I know that's the direction majority of Wairika that I speak to wants to see back. So I'm very excited to see it in front of us, very excited about the design and moving forward with it. So with that, I will move to public comment.
My name is Jan Osborne. I live in Wairika. I think the pool is a beautiful, beautiful-designed pool and the surrounding area. It looks wonderful. But I'm a what-if person. And on the PowerPoint thing, budget allocation for operations and maintenance is way down on the list. I'm envisioning we have a $12.8 million pool, which will probably be more than that, because it's already been said in this meeting, construction costs go up. Have a pool that we cannot maintain. As a citizen, I'd like to know what is going to be the cost of maintenance and operation to keep that pool working. From what I have read, many city pools or many cities are not building pools, because it is a money pit. It's not a moneymaker. And I'm concerned that where's the money going to come from? I haven't heard anything about, are we going to charge admission? I know on the grant that came from the state, that eight-and-a-half-million-dollar grant, we wouldn't have been allowed to charge admission. And we could not use any of the money for maintenance and operation. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We've spent, is it $750,000 for the design? I'd like to see some indication of where the money's coming from. Most pools, it says it's from admissions and general fund and grants. Well, our general fund, I think we've pretty tapped it for the next 40 years, if the fire hall thing goes through. I called around to various areas here. Etna's pool is free. Maybe they've got a secret thing that we could use about how you can maintain and operate a pool and not charge anybody for it. I called Rogue X in Medford, the Aquatic Center. $5 per child for a drop-in. That's resident. If you're non-resident, it's $6. For adults, up to 54, well, up to 55, it's seven. And then at 55 and older and the military, it drops back down to five. How many of our people can afford $5 for swimming with their family? That's just not one person. If you have a couple of children, that's going to be $10. I would like to have some indication and let the public know before we spend any more money and time, how we plan to pay for it. In my memory, that was one of the reasons we sent that grant back to the state that we had. There was no plan for maintenance and operation and we couldn't charge admission? Please, due diligence, let's get some figures and put it out to the public. This is what it's going to cost to maintain. We're going to be charging you X number of dollars. Are you willing to pay it? If you're not, what's the point of having a pool that you can't maintain and operate? We went through that, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Lorenzo Love. The existing pool, considering its age, is probably full of asbestos, lead paint, maybe water purification chemicals, making it a hazardous waste site. I'm under the impression that hazard mitigation grants are relatively easy to get. So why don't we start there? Get a grant to clean up the pool, to clean up the site. And then you can start when, whenever the pool grant comes through in the great buy and buy, you can, you don't have that burden. That'll save a million, maybe two million because I know asbestos mitigation is hideously expensive. So I would say that would be a good place to start. Oh, and I agree without a dedicated maintenance budget, a funding source for maintenance, the pool is just going to go the same way Ringy Pool did. Maintenance deferred because there's always something more important.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Miranda Velardi. I grew up here in Way Rika and grew up swimming at Ringy Pool. And yeah, it just was like such an important part of my childhood and my first job was as a lifeguard there. And so, yeah, just like speaking from a former lifeguard's perspective, I really love this design. I think it has a lot of safety features specifically. I really like the beach entry and the outdoor changing rooms. I know that was always an issue and it's also great that it's very beautiful and it looks like a pool because that was a major thing. People would come in, they'd be like, I had no idea there was a pool here. Like, yeah, it's been here for like 50 years. So I am a huge fan of the design. I, yeah, on the topic of like the two separate pools versus one pool, I guess like one thing I would say is that beach entry is very helpful for people with mobility impairments because I would see people struggling to get down the stairs. And so having them connected, I think, is nice so that they can get into the main pool. And yeah, I know you guys are in support of the pool, but yeah, just wanted to say like, supporting our kids and supporting making this a good place to live and a place that families want to live, I think is definitely worthwhile and investing in the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
So hi, I'm Kelly Velardi, mother of about one. And I moved here in 1992 in August and I'm a school teacher, retiring this year finally. But the first thing my husband and I did, we went to Ringy Pool. It was a hot summer and we just splashed around with people we didn't know. And we thought, oh, this is a great place. You know, how many of these are going to be our students? And so we raised our kids. We brought them to mommy and me, you know, the first exposure, kids getting wet, getting in a body of water. They did swim team, swim lessons and they, both of our children worked at the pool. But to me, it's more than just what kids get out of it. It is, as you said, you live across the street from an eyesore and a pit. As somebody just said, it's a money pit. I think property values will benefit from everything from the fire hall. You know, you're driving down our main street and you go, wow, as opposed to what's there now. Decrepital building that looks scary, you know, who wants to live here? Who wants to move here? And so on that level, I think, you know, you guys have already committed and thank you so much for investigating possible funding, investigating possible maintenance to move forward with this project. As long-term as that's going to take, at least we have the vision and I think that's really important. Regarding the design, I was fortunate enough to see that, get a little peek of it before. And knowing that the people with splash, which I was a member of, I was also on the, the grant writing team. One of the things that, and I appreciated that you guys looked back at that information and said, what, what could we take from that? We had hundreds of community members at those meetings. And so safety is a big one. I was told, and I actually did the goofy drawings from the first grant, that separating the two pools was a good idea. So if you look back at those drawings, they were separated from a maintenance standpoint in particular. So I would say, yes, please consider that as an option if it's financially feasible. But also then if you did that, because when I first looked at the design, I thought, yes, the beach entry, we need for handicapped and for youth. But if that was at the entrance side, you know, not on the lane side, but instead of kids having to walk all the way around or a handicapped person have to go all the way around to enter that beach entry, that makes more sense. And I know why there was no connection on the, the deep end where the, the blocks are on the diving board because that wouldn't be safe. So that's why it's designed the way it is. But if you separated them, then I would ask that maybe you think of flipping that and have the shallow end towards the lockers and the bathrooms and that for, for that purpose. Regarding fees that has come up, I would recommend that we don't charge to use the pool, but that's just for the public swim times. So it's a small portion of the day. In terms of programming, we've charged for swim lessons. We charge for exercise classes. If you have like diving, you know, you could teach diving in the pool, you could do canoeing and kayaking lessons and that you would charge for. And so there would be an income stream and it paid for operations of the pool along with what the city contributed in the past towards labor. So I, I think it is possible and I'm really excited that you guys are moving forward with this and just thank you so much for not letting it die. And, you know, hopefully encouraging people to want to live here and increase our property values. That would bring money to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Louise Cleato, Way Rika. I think the design is beautiful. But I would, it would make more economic sense to me to have, to have an indoor pool, which could be used all year round by more of the population instead of four months out of the year. However, since Way Rika has not won the mega lottery, we cannot afford this grandiose project and its maintenance and operating costs. When your roof is leaking, you don't build a swimming pool. You fix the roof to prevent further damage. Way Rika has many leaking roofs, which should be our priority because they are a public safety issues such as a new fire station, which is going to be about 20 million. And it, and it was, as it was mentioned earlier, that that cost will probably go up because inflation is going up. We need, our city council chambers is out of ADA compliance. And I don't know if you, those of you were here on that January meeting that we had, but we had two elderly women, older than me. And when they were leaving, one of them fell on the step. So as far as I can see, there is no ADA compliance for anyone in a wheelchair or is having trouble with their mobility. Also, it's, the other thing that we should be looking at is our hazardous sidewalks, particularly on minor street throughout the, and throughout the city and it's waiting for a seat, a serious injury or a death resulting in lawsuit costs. So in addition to that, I, I agree with Councilmember Drake that I would like, if this does go through, then I think that the children's pool should be separated from the rest because you're going to have kids that are not potty trained or in diapers and they're going to have accidents in that pool and you're going to have to drain that, to clean that. So I don't think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I can't have you come back up. One person, that's, no, that's, sorry. Come back next time.
Maria Tri. I know this will be off for a while before it actually comes to fruition, but we have in less than two years, a ballot coming up and maybe we could put on there the marijuana dispensary for the town because that is exactly how you could fund this maintenance of this pool for the life of the pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? A closed public comment. And I'm going to come back to the council. Councilman McCoy has a question for, I'm sorry, I forgot his name, the architect. What's his last name? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Devin Carter.
Carter, Mr. Carter.
Mr. Carter, this is Paul McCoy and I know that everything will be ADA compliant. Does ADA compliant also mean that we'll have a hoyer there available?
You're talking about a lift?
Yes.
Yes.
And will, will a hoyer be something that they can take in at night and then just, and then just?
That's up, up for discussion, I would say.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
There's, there's pro, just to jump, I'm sorry. There's pros and call, there's pros and cons with it. It just maintenance and that sort of thing. So as we move along, if that's something that we, that the council wants to see happen, we can look into it, I guess.
I, I just know from my 30 years in teaching, 23 of them in this city, every summer for the 23 years I was there and for the 30 years my spouse worked for the county office, a hoyer was used to transport students during the summertime into the, into the pool on a weekly basis. There might be as many as, as three or four, like on a Friday in the morning that would be swimming, that wouldn't normally be able to swim because there was a hoyer here. So.
Okay. Yeah, just to, just to kind of chime in on this is Jay Slibber, the city manager. So yeah, we looked at, you know, the beach access does not meet the ADA standard. If you had rails, it would. And so we've always had a lift planned for this, but it is one thing to consider that ultimately we may need two lifts if we have two different pools or it may need to be strategically placed that it can access both locations. So there will definitely be a lift at, at this site.
Thank you both.
Okay. Thank you. So you are looking for a direction to approve the Ringy Pool design as presented or come back with possible modifications, correct?
Yeah, and I would really just make the recommendation that I don't want to rush this step and I would like to get, you know, we did post this to get people to come in at the last meeting. And so my recommendation to the council and to Mr. Mayor here would be, why don't you not make a decision here this evening? Why don't you allow us to split the pool, change the beach entry side, really showcase the lift? And then we'll come back at a future meeting and before that meeting, why don't we go ahead and post online just advocating for anybody that has commentary on the pool to come back to that meeting. And we want to make sure that we don't miss engagement from the public because my fear is that we move forward and we seek funding and we get funding and then we have a design that maybe a portion of the community doesn't like. So that'd be my recommendation.
Okay. Is that okay with the council to have the change looked at and come back at another meeting? All right. Thank you. Okay. So this is item 11C. This is a digital title introduction, city attorney. This is a digital title introduction, a first reading of an ordinance amending chapter 2.04 of the Way Rika municipal code concerning procedures for appointment of mayor and mayor pro tem. Mr. Jared.
Evening, council. Mr. Mayor. As, as identified, this is an amendment to the city code to address some of the issues regarding the, the issue of duties of the city mayor and mayor pro tem and the process for appointing mayor and mayor pro tem. The staff report lays out that there were, much of this work in analyzing this was, was already done actually by another city. And so the chart that starts on page 157 of your packet, and I guess that's page two of the staff report itself. It shows a number of cities, how they do different things, slightly different. And it goes all the way from election by the public through different appointment methods. Election by the public, of course, would need to be, it's a wholly different process and that's not before the council tonight to act upon directly. But that could be an option to proceed with. And then this does identify that some of those choices and some choices you might be familiar, familiar with on how to appoint a mayor, a mayor pro tem are because of a charter city and a city charter that might, might be applicable. We tried to pull those out. Those really aren't the issue. So the proposed ordinance before you, just amend your current city code in section or chapter 2.04. And in that section provides some clarity as to how, what the, the roles of mayor and mayor pro tem are. Those are largely taken from your existing council code of conduct where that code of conduct briefly talks about some procedural stuff and it's not really clear why conduct, it's really about civility and as that document calls it, respect, is dealing more now with the actual content of what offices are supposed to be done. So on pages two and three of that document, more or less took those out and put them as 2.0410, or 010 of the proposed ordinance. We then get into the, the term of office would be a two-year term. That can be changed to a one-year term. That's entirely up to the city council. And then the selection process under section two of the proposed ordinance. Very clearly enumerates how the selection would go. Simple majority of the council membership and, and then nomination by simple majority as well and allowing for all members to, to have a, an ability to nominate. And then, and it also addresses removal since your current code of conduct says that, that the, the mayor and the mayor pretend serve at the pleasure of the city council. There isn't an indication on how removal would occur. So this adds a, a section, the proposed ordinance adds a, a section on, on how to remove. So this adds a a section, the proposed ordinance adds a a section on on how to remove a um, a mayor or mayor pro town um, during their their term of office. Um, I think that sums it up. If there are any questions, I hope I can answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Jared.
I get, Mr. Mayor, if I could add one more thing. Um, this is on for approval for first reading tonight. Um, it would then require um, second reading at the next council meeting. Um, and then would become 30 uh, effective 30 days thereafter. All of those um, actions would require a simple majority of of the five members of the council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jared. Um, okay, I'll open up to council for questions.
Mr. Jared, this is Councilman McCoy. I've got a question on section 2.04.020, selection process, section two. Uh, item E, can you read that for me and tell me what that says, please?
Is that where you're saying the city clerk shall collect the ballots from each council member after reasonable time has been provided to cast their vote for the office under consideration?
Okay, to cast their vote, not a their vote. I mean, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's just a typo.
Okay, okay.
Good catch.
And then um, again, can you tell me why you as an attorney think this is important? When I called uh, the California League of Cities and and got legal counsel from California League of Cities. I was told that by the attorney that they had only seen this done twice in their uh, time as an attorney. And that, I mean, they they didn't say they didn't see any worth in it. But they said they'd only seen two different councils that had changed this. So I'm wondering why for you, this is such an important thing to do. It seems that's very important for you as well as for some council members.
Well, I don't know who you spoke with.
Um, that doesn't matter who it was. That doesn't matter. I mean, they were, they have no reason to lie to me.
Yeah, I I don't know you spoke with the Cal Cities or what their experience is. I I I think that I've uh, seen this at a few more than two um, places. Um, and I I think that the the staff report outlines um, a number of other cities that have gone through this process and evaluated how a selection process should work. Um, as far as adopting a full ordinance versus a policy or just going with um, a a general practice. Um, yeah, those are all ways that in most cities, frankly, um, I think Cal Cities are probably right. Um, most cities probably do just kind of go with the flow and allow it to happen. What's clear is state law says um, that the city council shall do this thing of selecting a mayor then um, immediately after um, the tabulation and accepting of of ballot results. Um, unfortunately, we had a situation here where that came to an impasse. Um, so the rest of the council um, has um, asked that this ordinance be prepared. That's why it's important to me.
Well, and and again, it doesn't matter who the attorney was. I mean, he's dead, but it could have been F. Lee Bailey. It doesn't matter who the attorney was. Um, um, you've gotten this done in a record amount of time. Because I've looked back at some of our meetings and as far back as November 7th of 2023, you told us that you'd have a code of conduct done for us in eight to 10 weeks. We've never gotten it. You also told us uh, we we talked at that point as a council about having you go through and to um, uh, and to um, check our our um, ordinances and to amend the ordinances, it needed to be amended or 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 brought, you know, brought more current, which is, and we asked that it be done, not piecemeal, but we asked that it be done in a cogent way that we that we're that we're looking at everything. And again, at that time, I believe you said you could do that in four to six weeks and bring it back to us. And yet those were never brought back to us. Now, sir, you're bringing back to us, uh, you're bringing back to us something that obviously you worked very, very hard on. Otherwise, I mean, it it is, you know, if it was this important to you that you could do that, but you could not get us our code of conduct back in a timely manner. I spent over a year and a half now and you could not work on the rest of the ordinances. Again, it's been, it was, it was November 7th of 2023. I, you know, um, I I'm just wondering, we have a mayor right now. He's sitting to my right. You advised us as a council at one time and you advised the city not too long ago after the election that if we could not come to an agreement on a mayor, that the current mayor would stay in the position. Now, I understand you've changed your stance on that. It's it's, the state is now telling us what's something they weren't telling us after the election. They're telling us we have got to elect a new mayor. So I mean, can you address that for everybody that's sitting in this chamber?
Yeah, sure. There's a lot to uh, to address in what you just said.
Oh, yeah, there's a heck of a lot to address.
I'll start backwards there.
Point of order.
Let's start backwards. Are you done or should I continue to listen?
Pardon me, Mayor?
Point of order.
Point of order.
I have the floor, point of order.
What is that?
Point of order, you do not have the right to speak at this time.
Okay, I I'm I'm sorry, but I'm
Mr. Jared? Mr. Jared? Okay, he's asking a question. He's going to answer. So point of order. Point of order, yes. He's going to answer his question. Mr. Jared, can you answer um, the question that was asked of you by Councilman McCoy at time of?
Certainly, it sounds like there were several there and there were several points that I think I need to address. Um, the last point probably is the most important. Um, I don't think I've changed any opinion here. And I don't think that there is any change in California law. Uh, California law is what requires uh, after the election, that there be a mayor um, and mayor pro town appointed, period. That's always been the case and that's the way um, it is done. Um, there are many cities that go about this in a process. Um, some of them do not do it immediately after um, the um, election. And then that lasts an entire two-year period or a one-year period. What's very common is for an ordinance to happen, that it's happens immediately after the election and that it's a nine-month rotational that occurs. That's quite a common um, man- manner of dealing with this. Um, as far as my opinion about this, as to who is the mayor? Yeah, absent um, any type of policy, which City Warrica does not have. Um, absent that policy, um, the office of the mayor is held by the person who continued that had it uh, previously, they just continue on until this act of electing a mayor occurs. That act does not happen. And so my opinion in in December is is what my opinion is now. You have a state law that says you have to appoint a mayor. It doesn't mean that um, if that fails, uh, and you get the no vote that you've uh, had for several meetings there, that um, the current mayor, mayor pro tem stays on uh, for this next term of office. Um, and and so that's, that's why my opinion was back in November. Then we had issues in in January and February and and here we are now in March. As for the issue of um, taking care of this in record time, it really wasn't that um, difficult, to be perfectly honest. Um, it wasn't like the code of conduct, which was, you know, juggling five balls of what um, all you different council members want to see and and piecing that together. And with one council member wanting to not provide any input in that. And instead, um, that input be, we just need to hash it out during a full days conference. Um, that's one of the major reasons why no code of conduct came before you or came back to you. Um, the other reason no code of conduct has come back before you is it is quite a undertaking and will be um, quite a bit of um, of work to be done, which means money. And so given that um, the city's finances are what they are and the the pressures that are on, uh, budgetary pressures associated with that, that has been um, depro- prioritized both by the council and in in my interactions with staff on when should we be um, going down that road. If you would like me to work on that and and you seem to really be pushing that issue, I'm more than happy to. And we can certainly make that a priority. Um, as for the issue of um, a full rewrite of the the city code, I think the four to six weeks um, period of time, if it was four weeks, um, that was my analysis of what needed to be corrected. We've been um, addressing that uh, in a in a case-by-case basis. And as things have come up, there are certain ordinances that we do recommend that get adopted. But frankly, there are, there are not a a whole host of things that are completely um, um, and wholesale so far out in left field. Now, there's a lot that needs a tune-up. Um, but there's nothing, nothing that's being enforced that's um, that I have seen yet that is so violently offending someone's constitutional or other rights um, that we need to to rush to that. I have had conversations uh, within the past month with um, um, staff about in the future bringing this back as other issues have calmed down and as there is uh, room in the budget to do a comprehensive um, uh, over uh, look over of the entire city code. And I would recommend that we do that, um, starting frankly first with the the sign ordinance and then starting um, with chapter one and two and going pretty much straight through the 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 code um, thereafter. And this would come in probably a monthly or bi-monthly approach to um, a a addressing what issues are there and then allowing the city council to um, to proceed. So um, but as far as any comparison with this rather um, easily uh, I addressed issue of how do you select a mayor and the rest of it? I think it's a little apples oranges.
You you mentioned appointing the mayor pro tem. That's not what you meant to say, is it? That the you would appoint, you you said, use the word appoint and you said mayor pro tem. That if, that that, that to take the place if we couldn't come to a uh, uh, if we couldn't elect a mayor. That's not what you meant is, I mean, it's, I read your words up here, so.
I I don't know what you're quoting, what what I was getting at was when
This is what you just said.
Well, I said, I said a lot there and I don't know.
What we would do is we would appoint, without having a mayor, we would appoint the mayor pro tem as mayor. I mean, if you want, we can go back through that.
That's not.
That's what you said, sir. I'm asking.
I don't, I I don't know what you heard. What, I don't know what you heard.
Not what I heard, sir. It's what I read off of that. I'm asking you, that's not what you meant. Please say that.
Um, I don't know what you're reading from, if it's from the um, the AI-generated version that's on the screen. Um, maybe sometimes I get
I don't think Warrica's got AI on the screen. I don't
Why, why don't you allow me, you know, I I'm more than happy to let you speak. If you would like me to to answer your question, I can do that too.
I'd like it.
What would you like to do?
A lot of lip service, so I I'm going to be quiet.
I think what he's asked is, you didn't meant to say, I don't know, I'm not looking back, that the mayor pro tem isn't automatically put in that seat. Correct?
Well, let's, let's just start from the beginning. Um, on the first meeting after or at the meeting where the the results of the canvas are supposed to happen, there's supposed to be a selection of mayor and mayor pro tem. Are we all, did I say that correctly? So then that tried uh, to occur, it did not occur. And what we went through was then mayor and mayor pro tem that were currently there, the both of you, stay in those seats until such time that the government code required appointment of a mayor and a mayor pro tem occurs. Was there any miscommunication there between what I just said?
No, I asked you a simple question. I'm just listening to what you have to say.
Okay, so that's all that, um, whatever I said and whatever came out and whatever was shown on the screen. Um, what I've just said is what the law is. The fact that the city of Warrica does not have a process frustrates that transition.
That's fine. You didn't answer my question, but that's okay. I'm sure AI took over and through this and AI has been talking to all of us, so. I'm gonna.
Okay.
I'm not getting questions answered, so.
I'm sorry, what what question did you want to answer?
I I want to, I
Hold on.
Well, let's, let's talk about it. Let's go back to on November 7th, 2023. You said, and we talked about this, that we needed to go through and do a cogent, thoughtful look at ordinances. And we needed it, then we needed to start rewriting those ordinances. On, in one particular area, you said you could have it done by a certain time. Okay? Um, when this ordinance came up, one of the things I talked about is let's do this in a thoughtful way. Let's not have a knee-jerk reaction. Let's not, let's not have a knee-jerk reaction to because something is not going the way that you might want it or I might want it, that we go, oh, we, you know, we're just going to change the rules. And so when I went back and looked, I noticed that you said, no, we need to go, you agreed. We need to go through it in a in a cogent way and we need to go through all these. And you actually gave a timeline. But that, I mean, that may have been AI too. I don't know. AI could have been giving me a timeline back in December. But so I I'm just asking why all of a sudden we have to push, push, push for this when we could be pushing for it with other ordinances at the same time? I mean, we, before you came on, we've done some, we've got some great ordinances. Again, women don't have to wear heels when they play on the tennis courts in Warrica. I've told you that before. And uh, businesses do not have to have a water trough full in front of Warrica because a council, the council two years ago, we 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 went through and switched those. But um, yeah, I'm just trying to get you to answer me why it's so important to do it one thing right now when we could be doing a whole number of them? And you've told me money? I don't think this council has ever uh, said anything about money other than sometimes to Jason that uh, you know, that we don't need all of the stuff that you send us. It's sometimes we don't like being charged for certain things. Um, but um, but I'm not getting any cogent answer from you.
I I don't know what more to say than um, than I'm more than happy to to dive in and um, and take a a fresh look at everything that should be changed in your code. Um, and uh, it certainly was not whatever I said in November of 2023 that was taken as, and I can have that code amendment to you in a month. That is not what I meant at all. So I apologize if I miscommunicated then.
I mean, yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. Any other council members have questions or comments? No question, comments, okay. Do you have a question or comment? Mr. Davis?
I I'm not sure.
Okay.
Mr. McCoy, I apologize for interrupting you. I just wanted you to know that. Um, the the comment, um, are we taking um, input on this particular 11C? From, do we take that? I I want to know the processes, the one I'm asking, Mr. Mayor.
On the agenda item 11C, yeah, the comments for the first reading of the um,
Right, so
Yeah.
Are, it's our turn for comment or is it the public's?
It's your turn. It's our turn still.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, it would be very clear. Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, at this point, it is the city council's time to ask clarifying questions. Not to weigh in on um, uh, dial a a argument of what to change, et cetera. Um, that's with, you know, after the clarifying questions, then comes the public comment, then comes um, the the city council debate.
Yeah. I think we're going that route, clarifying questions, but it just wasn't satisfied. So okay, point of order, please, point of order. Okay, uh, so clarifying questions to Mr. Jared are for the um, yeah, item 11. The dean.
I'm sorry, I I can't hear.
My mic's off, I apologize.
Oh, there we go.
There is a typo on page 165 in section 2H. And it it reads council member desiring to serve for office under consideration shall be, and it goes shall be placed, it's a double, double Shelby in there and it just.
Mr. Jared, this is Jason Ledbetter, it's on line 95.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter.
Oh, okay, yeah, typo there as well.
Mr. Jared, I have a question for you. So when we started started this process or you discovered, you and I had a conversation, it was discovered that the city did not have in place what we were doing prior was legit or the law are really written how we're supposed to do it, correct?
Yes, generally, yeah.
So and then you mentioned that we go to the Rosenberg rules. Correct?
Correct.
So I guess, you know, I've read that Rosenbergs can be changed. So I guess my question, I don't know if it's really clarification, this, I guess it does because you did do the ordinance based on. So why is it that city councils have just a little, you know, you don't have to spend a lot of time on it? Why do we have Rosenberg rules if it just like if all of a sudden, oh, no, we don't care about this? That we just override everything, we start rewriting the whole book of Rosenberg and just kind of replacing that? Is it just a model or whatever? Because it seems to me like any council member can step up here and say, whoa, I don't like that, I want to change that, I don't care about Rosenberg. And as long as you get three votes and it doesn't go the way they want or be the way it goes, whatever, we just change it. Do you see that other cities where it's just like people are constantly changing because I just don't want to become a council of if things don't go someone's way and they don't like how the procedure is going, that we just start throwing away the book of Rosenbergs and start writing our own path and our own rules of moving forward because and I do agree, I think there's a ton of work we needed to do on everything, just not this subject. But can you explain to me why Rosenberg's really exists? It's just the models, it's just like old school of something that is out of date? And now the cities are realizing that that those rules that are is governed that they're realizing that they may not be adequate now?
Ready for me to talk on this?
Yeah, please, thank you.
So rules of procedure can either be taken off the shelf, which is what Robert's rules initially was. And for most of the history of cities in in the United States, people use Robert's rules. Unfortunately, Robert's rules was written for conventions and not for small legislative bodies. And so Rosenberg happened to be a council member of City of Davis, I believe, and saw a better way, put together what he called his own Rosenberg's Rules of Order, really tailored for for small local governments, particularly cities. But to be certain, Rosenberg's rules is not tailored for your needs. It's not tailored for appointing a city committee members, it's not tailored for appointing a mayor or for a mayor pro tem. It's general rules of procedure. Rosenberg's rule does not address this very issue. The only thing Rosenberg's does is address the issue of how to fairly allow members of the council to put their name up for nomination. That's the only rule that comes close to what you're dealing with here for your appointment of the mayor and the mayor pro tem. What Rosenberg says about that is that there's this super majority requirement so that the minority on a council, meaning two members, don't get aced out of having their name on the ballot to even be considered by the other three. And so it requires the super majority to just close the nominations. And we reached a situation here where that reached an impasse where that super majority vote did not occur. And so nominations were not closed. And so to not have a vacant office and have this complete power vacuum of, well, who's gonna open the meeting? Who's gonna say what's up next? And who's going to close the meeting? All the things the mayor does. The status quo stays as is, and that's why Mayor Milton, you've stayed as mayor since mid-December. So to be certain, Rosenberg's does not cover appointment of a mayor, appointment of the mayor pro tem. Those are you rules of procedure, not parliamentary procedure, rules of procedure that are typically covered covered either with a rules of procedure, bylaws, or in many cases, a city code. And so that's what's before you tonight.
Okay. Okay. And so when you say when council members aren't aced out from a vote, being aced out would be, say, if a council member, you know, has the right to campaign and say, I'm interested, but being aced out is being having knowledge that they've retained those votes. Is that kind of an example of being knowing that those two people are aced out, knowing that somebody has the knowledge?
No, what I was getting at there with aced out, what the public policy is behind the Rosenberg requirement, there that requirement for saying when you're doing nominations, it's a super majority before you close nominations, there could be a situation where, let's say, a mayor says, okay, we've got the the appointment of mayor and mayor pro tem coming up. I'm in charge, I'm gonna just put this over to a committee of me and only me to nominate people for nominations. Okay, I nominate me and that's it. Nominations are closed, all in favor. That would be blatantly unfair. So would it be unfair to say, okay, leaving it to a a simple majority in Rosenberg's mind? It was to receive a if only there were a simple majority to be even nominated, then two people on the other side couldn't even nominate themselves to be considered to be on as mayor or mayor pro tem. And so that's the public policy behind the Rosenberg rule on that. In fact, what we saw here, however, was a little different. There was every permutation or nearly every permutation of who could be, who's going to be nominated? And still we couldn't get a closure of the vote. And so the 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 method that I proposed here and and to to be clear, I proposed this and it was published, what? In January, and I have not heard any comments from any council member, either publicly or privately, of a different proposal or asking questions about how this all would work. So, I mean, here we are. And so what it means now is so we have the process of selection is at line 60. And the the presiding officer would conduct that. Each council member would have the ability to submit their nomination. So this, what I proposed here was just a a completely different approach to not asking for you know, a a member to nominate someone else. It's very clear, you can nominate yourself. Every member has the right and the ability to nominate themselves. And so with that, and then at line 66, after each member's had a reasonable opportunity to submit nomination, the presiding officer closes the nominations. And to make sure that this doesn't happen in an instant, at line 68 through 70, there would still be a motion requirement. But it would require the simple majority and not the super majority that's causing us the or causing you the problem that you had in no in December and in January.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council members? Or clarification regarding that ordinance? Okay, I'll go to public comment.
Jan Osborne from Wayrica. I just urge you to look at that agenda. The staff has given a recommended motion. I would like to see that happen. There's no reason, a valid reason that I can think of why we're at this point where there's all this angst and conflict over the position of mayor. Get to the vote, please. Make a motion, somebody second it, and then vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Louise Goliado again at Wayrica. As I recall, the last meeting, you, the council at a three to two vote, voted to have the city attorney do an ordinance following Robert's Rule of Law, making it the super majority. This should be a no brainer. And I have a question in terms of pointed order, is the attorney still on there? Because it seems to me on the agenda, and maybe I'm wrong, but on the agenda, it says to consider this ordinance and to go back and review and belabor the fact that the rest of the ordinance have not been revised. I, to me, that seems like you're off subject. Now, I don't know if that just applies to the community or if it applies to city council members. So if you've got that on the agenda, saying that you're gonna vote on this, I I think it's perfectly fine to ask questions. But to go back and talk about past errors in your ordinance are not doing it. And by the way, I know about the high heels and the tennis court, I could probably, I could probably mouth it because I've heard that so many times. I've heard the thing about the water trough so many times. So let's just get on with this and do a mayor. It seems to me, and from what my understanding is, that the mayor makes appointments to committees and people are supposed to go. So I don't know if that has not been done since we've been going on and on about this every single meeting and and spending a whole hour on it the last time to do it. It's very simple, read the ordinance, if you don't like it, then don't vote for it. And I think it ought, and and as it had been said before, it's call for a question and vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Marie Atrey. Mr. Mayor, Council? So the one thing I don't understand is when we first started this whole thing, the second round, when we first started this whole thing, the attorney said that we cannot set aside the rule, Rosenberg's Rule of Order and how it's done. So that means we can't set it aside. We have to stick with the two thirds vote. So also in the second round, the attorney had said if there are no nominations and it's closed, the mayor stays the mayor. On the second round, there were no nominations, it was closed. And for some reason, he pushed for it to be reopened. He should have said, we have a mayor. Period. And and this attorney is giving advice a lot unclear. Says stuff unclear. My taxpayers are paying his fee. His firm's fee. I would like another attorney representing the city of Wayrica. And I have many other people also liking that. So I would like you guys to consider having someone who is not biased and someone who is not giving the city bad information to represent us. And also, when considering a mayor, having someone who represents this city and I call and I get, what do you want, Don Marie, from Colleen Baker? That's not the best I want. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, I'll close public comment. Do you have anything? Anything to respond to regarding public comment, Mr. Jared? Or to clarify?
Um, yeah, I I guess I would like to to clarify the issue about setting aside the rules. What Rosenberg's Rules of Order do allow for is to set aside the rules in a meeting. Robert's rules allows for that as well. And many other rules of parliamentary procedure adopted specifically for various entities do allow for that as well. What that means is during the meeting, at that point, at any time, a council member can move to set aside the rules. Yeah, to get around an impasse, to address a situation that doesn't particularly fit in with what the rule is, you know, is saying, but what the council wants to do instead. And so there is a provision to allow the council to address that type of an issue. And that's called a motion to set aside the rules. That only applies during that meeting. It means that you wouldn't follow that rule right now. But in, you would vote to set aside, you would do, if that motion passes, go about your business. And then after that item is over, you go back and that rule applies thereafter. That's what a motion to set aside means. It's also perfectly allowed, both under Rosenberg's and under California law, to select the rules that you want to abide by and tailor them to suit you. You as your council. And so if you adopt Rosenberg's, you can adopt them with exceptions. You can adopt them with amendments. And you don't need to do that the first meeting that you adopted Rosenberg's, it's a fluid document. And so it's perfectly legitimate to change your rules of procedure, both during a meeting and go back to it at the next meeting, and to permanently change them to suit your needs. I think that that's all I need to to clarify.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we'll go back to item number. This is 11C, so the recommended city council action is one, move to waive the full reading of the proposed ordinance and introduce the first reading by title only in orders of the city of council. I'm sorry, the city council of the City of Wayrica, California, adding sections and 2.04.030 to the chapter 2.04, City Council of Title II, Administration and Personnel of the Raca Municipal Code and Finding the Ordinance Except from SEQA, and II, Direct City Staff to take all actions required for the adoption for the proposed ordinance. Okay, what are the wishes of the council?
I would like to make that motion. If, I'll read it to you if you'd like me to.
Yes, please.
I moved to waive the full reading of the proposed ordinance. And introduce for the first reading by title only. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Waireca, California. Adding sections two point zero four point zero one zero. Two point zero four point zero two zero and two point four. Two point zero four point zero three zero to chapter two point zero four. City council of title two. Administration and personnel of the Waireca municipal code and finding the ordinance exempt from SEQA. And direct city staff to take all actions required for adoption of the proposed ordinance.
I have a motion for Councilman Davis.
I'll second that motion.
And a second from, uh, Councilman Baker. Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, before there's the vote, I just want to clarify that those two typographic errors are non-substantive at line. Eighty and ninety five, I'm assuming those would be included in, in the, the motion.
For the correction of the errors, okay. Okay. I'll do roll call. Uh, Councilman Claire?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
No.
Before I cast my, uh. My vote, I just want to say. I'm still very confused about the process. We were led down where we're at and the changes, um. That occurred, and so it wasn't as easy as, as everybody's talking about because we're thrown into, um. Just kind of a firestorm of a change where we're doing it right, having it changed and proposed. And so therefore I vote no, so the motion passes three to two. All right. Item number twelve, number twelve. So we go to city manager and staff report. City manager and staff may make brief announcements or reports at this time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Waireca City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager, uh, once again here for my staff report. So I think it was inferred earlier that there was a cancellation of a meeting, so it's been some time since we've last met. So on two thirteen, I met with the mayor and supervisor Harris to discuss the city of Waireca's interest in having a home key project in Waireca. And the need to have the county behavioral health staff provide the services to that project. Also, on two thirteen, I attended the care court meeting at noon at the Siskiyou Superior Court with Judge Bachego. Uh, where it was reiterated by Judge Bachego, um, that care court is voluntary from her perspective. Uh, and so that is in conflict with kind of information we were provided about care court originally. On two eighteen, I met with Mark Atwood, uh, California Department of Fish and Wildlife in the Kedok. To discuss the vegetation removal project on the Greenway and, uh, the garbage that's currently in the creek. On two twenty, I met with Pacific Corps in Portland. On two twenty seven, I toured Greenhorn and Waireca Creek with, uh, Public Works, uh, CDFW again and council member Drake Davis. We discussed our plan for vegetation removal and complying with our sixteen hundred permit. And we expect to start vegetation removal along Waireca Creek later this month. And then finally tomorrow, I will be headed to a housing conference in Sacramento. And I will be back Friday evening. I'll be available via phone and email if needed. And then this evening, I think we have, uh, yeah, Police Chief Gilman will give, um, a staff report as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Chief Gilman, good evening.
Good evening, Council. Uh, this is Chief Gillen, Market Police Department. So I've been asked to provide stats on occasion, um, something I typically didn't do, but I'm more than happy to do it. Also, at the end of these stats, I'd like to say that we went live with our sun ridge system. So our stats now are viewable to anyone that wants to look at our stats, uh, for the most part. So I'll get into the sun ridge discussion here in a little bit. But we're still averaging around nineteen hundred calls a month for thirty days. I went back a couple of months just on the incidents, but then I only went back thirty days. Like I said, we haven't had a meeting in a while, so I got, my stats got all confused. But we're averaging nineteen hundred calls a month. Uh, one of the interesting stats I found from Kelly Gerardano, our dispatcher pulled it for me. Uh, in the last thirty days, we had four hundred and forty nine nine one one calls that came in. And a total of two hundred and eighty. Two thousand eight hundred and fifty two calls per service. But over four hundred nine one one calls, that's a lot. I didn't realize we had that many. It does ring all day, but that's, that's a lot. So the nineteen hundred calls we handle a month, uh, those are just the incidents, those aren't reports. We still tend that the unhoused community still tends to be the biggest draw on us. We have just in homeless liaison where we go out and try to help them, you know, give them house, things like that. That's five percent of what we do out of all our calls for service. And then all the trespasses, the petty thefts, all the incidents we have with, uh, the complaints about people camping in doorways and stuff. Amounts to well over eleven percent of what we do on our incident wise. Cases we had, I believe it was around sixty four cases in the last thirty days. Uh, seventeen of them were drug related, twenty five were homeless theft and trespass calls with the unhoused communities. So out of sixty three, twenty five was the unhoused community. And we had seven domestic violence, handfuls of deaths and some other cases that are smaller on the list. So that's basically the stats for about the last thirty days. But when I'm gonna talk about a sun ridge, and I never got a chance to get ahold of Cindy today because we got super busy, they were short-staffed, and so I was handling calls. But if she can pull up the city of Waireca's website and go to the police department website, I can walk you through it. Otherwise, I can tell you, that's something we can do? Okay, I didn't know if we could share that, and I didn't want to put you on the spot. Okay. So while she's working on that, I'll explain. Our sun ridge system that we implemented over a year ago, we were all part of that, and the council approved it. We can talk with other agencies, we can show our stats, we have, it's a little bit easier system to work through. Part of it is called Citizen Rims. Citizen rims, the sheriff's department's already doing it, they went live, I believe, a month ago or so. This is the screen you'll see on Citizen Rims. And it just gives you. These are calls for service that we have, and we are selective on it. We don't show everything we do because some things are confidential. If we're doing a child molest, I don't want to say we're doing a child molester at this house or at this block. We don't do anything that has to do with like domestic violence, if it has, involves names, or if we're on an active scene for homicide. We're not gonna list that. So this will be incidents that we've agreed to list. This is only for the last couple of days. And tho- those are all the incidents. You'll see some plus signs, everything has a different picture when you look at it. A plus sign means there was multiple incidents there. So if you look at Walmart, there'll be a plus sign, and you open up the plus sign, it will show all the crimes we have at Walmart. But it gives you a good bird's eye view of what we handle in Waireca, where we go, and how often we go. Uh, this is, like I said, just a couple of days, and this is all day long. So the Citizen Rims, for anyone that's looking for it, this screen. You go to the Waireca Police Department webpage. At the bottom, you see online reports where the public is allowed to submit a case that they fill out. When you click online reports, on the left-hand side, you'll see the term Citizen Rims. And that'll take you right to this page. It shows your missing persons, there's tabs you can play around with, it shows you what stolen cars are out there if you want to look for them. This system's only been live since Friday, so there's probably not a whole lot of info there. I think we had three missing persons and maybe six stolen cars. But like I said, this is only implemented on Friday, so it'll build as it goes. See the online reporting that Cindy's showing you on the screen, that's right on the police department's page. There's also a Citizen Rims at the bottom, that looks like it just got added, I didn't see that earlier.
That's under Community Resources?
Oh, okay. Yeah. The thumbs up on the map, which one? Oh, so let's see. Can you click one? Traffic stop. So a thumbs up is proactive activity, that means we're doing a good job, they got a thumbs up. In our, in our stats, we had over two hundred traffic stops in that month. I think we had a handful of DUI arrests, um, and some accidents. So a thumbs up would be proactive, security checks, things like that. So I don't know if there's any questions on that, but that's my report for the stats and how the system works.
All right.
You betcha.
Oh, hold on, hold on, oh, all right, he just said thank you. Okay, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief Gillen. All right, any other staff? Okay, we'll, we'll go to city, um, council for any staff reports. Let's go to Councilman Claire, any reports to give? Councilman McCoy, no? Councilman Davis, any reports at this time? You didn't have any meetings, correct?
Yeah, yes, I do.
Oh.
Uh, I, I was active with Mr. Ledbetter and Ms. Baker. Uh, at a meeting at the Karuk, uh, housing office with Mr. Atwood, and we talked about trash removal. Um, also, I was active with Mr. Ledbetter when we went with the California Department of Fish and, uh, Fish and Wildlife, excuse me. Um, when we crewed Greenhorn Park, and we were talking about, uh, cutting a little bit of the shrubbery back from the lake. Because it's, uh, reservoir, and it's, it's a little bit bushy. And they were allowing us to do that, and, uh, Ben Miller, who is kind of running the shot down there. Has got that going really good, and if you haven't been down there in a while, uh, you ought to take a walk in the park. So to speak. Man, he, he's gonna, I, I think he bends, really does a good job. I'm really impressed with the young man. Um, I, and you know, some things. You look for, and some things just kind of fall in your lap. And this just happened to be one of the latter. Um, and, and I'll tell the short story on this. I went to my dermatologist in Medford, and he get, he knows that I'm on the city council down here. And he says, what do you think about this? And it was an article about the Palisades Fire down in Los Angeles. And while I'm on the fire safe council here, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. Um, I, I appreciate that, it's been really a fun time. And anyway, he gives me this, and there's one house in their block withstood the fire. And they wrote an article about it, it was in one of the papers, and I, he didn't give me that, but I, I brought you the article. Uh, and, and I thought maybe you might like to. Share, I'd like to share it with you, any. They took, they talk about house partying and all of that stuff. One of the key things is in the background, you can kind of see a.
I think I saw this.
They don't have a delivery system to get the, uh, water to the fire or to the house. Well, this merchant had a delivery system that was solar, big power to get the water to the house. And for, and it saves the house in the rubble. Kind of cool. Anyway. I believe. There's one other thing, maybe. Oh, um. We have a, the Klamath National Forest has a new supervisor, and I, I didn't catch the gentleman's name. But he's from the MODOC, and he's just started over here. Seems like a very nice, uh, gentleman. Mr. Mayor, that's you.
All right, thank Councilman Davis. Councilman Baker?
Uh, thank you. Um, so I've met with the committee for the Waireca Citizen of the Year, um, celebration and recognition. Um, we met on January twenty eighth and February twentieth, um, just to discuss logistics. And now that we have a full committee, I'm looking forward to moving forward, uh, quickly with finalizing plans. Um, in addition to that, on, I believe it was February fourth, I'm looking at my notes, it seems like it was so long ago. Um, I attended the board of supervisors meeting via Zoom. Um, and then, uh, Councilmember Davis.
I have been going for a walk in the park, and you kind of stole my thunder.
So, um, I am really impressed with how clean Waireca, how clean, um, Greenhorn Park is. Um, I've walked that park for years, and I'm just impressed that, uh, there's, uh, very little dog, uh. Residue, um, and the path around the lake is clean and, um. I have not encountered any loose dogs when I'm out walking. Um, in addition to that, I'm, um, really impressed with the work that's being done by the city crews. It's looking really good. So, Mr. Ledbetter, would you pass along my, my kudos to the city crews, um, that are doing that work?
Absolutely.
And in addition to that, I've been conducting a random, non-scientific poll of the fishermen. At Greenhorn Park. And they have been reporting to me, um, mixed results. Um, and, uh, the most common, um, comment that I receive when I ask the fishermen, how's their day going? Um, they, they say that it doesn't really matter because, as we all know, a bad day of fishing. Is way better than a good day at work. That's my report that I have tonight.
All right, thank you, Councilman Baker, appreciate that. All right, for me, I, um, attended the, um, C two C meeting. Um, not as an official, uh, capacity at that time because, um. Uh, Councilman McCoy was out of town, uh, I know, um. Chief Gilman was, um, gone, so I did attend, um, but now I am the alternate. And Mr., uh, Councilman McCoy has been appointed to represent and fill the position of, um. Uh, vacating councilman keg, so we do have that position filled. Um, so just to go back, we usually don't answer questions regarding, um, public comment. But the mayor duties have, um, been in full swing, all committees have been fulfilled, and all mayor, mayor duties have been, uh, fulfilled. Why I've been sitting in a seat, so nothing has been undone, so all the, um. All the committees are filled, um, for another couple of years. Um, uh, so that did not stop, uh, my job here continued. Um, just because we did not have a selection, everything continued as normal. Uh, so I did, uh, attend that, uh, they pointed, um. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Ogren is the chair. They did not, uh, appoint a co-chair and, um. Don't be surprised, but it probably is going to be you, because they didn't appoint one, and they're waiting for you to come back, uh, Councilman McCoy. So, uh, and then, of course, um, James Claire is gonna fill, um, vacating councilman, um. Uh, keg's, um, committee seat on the, um, Citizen of the Year, so, um, that will be good. Um, other than that, like I said, we had everybody, we had the snowstorm, we did not meet, a lot of things have happened. The city's been busy, I know, and, um. Hopefully, spring is in sight, and, um, we got a lot going on, and, um. With that, I will say goodnight, thank you for everybody for coming, and we hope to see you next time, um, be safe, meeting adjourned.